Yeah. It's just you wake up and you.
Yeah.
Lacrosse here.
Yeah.
And the guys that are, the guys that are the coaches are.
For your team?
For our team.
Tommy Conway?
Yep.
Yeah, his kid played hockey.
Yep.
His son plays hockey. We played hockey with him some years ago. He's a good guy.
Good guy, really good guy.
Yeah, I like Tommy.
And a lot of the other guys I grew up with that played lacrosse.
Yeah.
So it's just like we, I'm so glad that my kids are there at this age.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all working out for us. Like their heart is really in it.
Is that your iPad?
She's not feeling it.
It is. Well, I take that back. It's cool.
Good answer, Mr. Guile. Good answer.
And Michael, do you know, I can't figure out why, maybe if I missed it. Like it was a hair.
Nothing else.
It is. I can't figure out what.
I just want you to know I wasn't here when they set up tonight, so there's, it's not purposeful that you still have been placed in this position.
Two minutes. Great.
Done two.
One minute.
Still got that?
You haven't lost it, Kelly, have you?
It's hard to lose.
I.
Standby.
Yeah, you do.
In ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May twelfth, two thousand fourteen School Committee Meeting. This meeting is live and being recorded. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My chair's stuck on the, uh, cord. Great. The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Begin this evening with a presentation from Wolf Swamp Road School, where this tonight is Principal Neil Guile and three students. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Who would love that?
I'm Aiden.
I'm Dagan.
I'm Brendan.
Great. And you guys are here tonight to talk about your field guide, correct?
Correct.
And that's an ebook?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let you present it and then we're gonna fire questions at you.
Okay.
Now, they'll all be, they'll be really easy. So, I'm gonna get out of the way.
And, and while they're just doing last minute prep here, um, just to take a moment, I, I have to recognize before the gentlemen get going, the, uh, support of LEAF and the MCC, the Massachusetts Cultural Council, um, of the Arts, who sponsored, uh, supported this ebook, this, uh, this, uh, this, uh, project that we did over about a year and a half ago, we began planning. We worked closely with, um, the Hitchcock Center out of Amherst, and they are a naturalist, uh, a preserve, and they do a lot of outreach with the local schools. Helen Anne Sepino, who was instrumental, she was our naturalist in residence, who came down and really was the facilitator, uh, for this whole project. Lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the efforts of Ms. Nicole Holmes and Mrs. Krishna Longenecker, who, without them, this project would not be here. And it was an incredible endeavor and one that, uh, we certainly did not appreciate going into it, but, uh, on that note, I'm thrilled to introduce the gentlemen, uh, again, Aiden de Blasio, Dagan Conley, Brendan O'Sullivan, who will take it from here. So gentlemen, it's all yours.
So, so Brendan, um, what was it like working with Helen Anne and studying the plants and, like, you know, going into nature?
Um, it was, um, fun, uh, um, so like, we don't have to, like, stay inside all day. We got to, um, like, go outside and observe, um, um, like, different plants and, 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 um, what, why animals use, um, the plants for it.
Aiden, can you add to that?
Um. I, I like going outside with Helen Anne, um, because, um, you won't have to, like, stay inside the school and, um, do all the work. Um, you, um, get to go outside and, um, play and, um, investigate stuff.
Okay, Brendan, I mean, Aiden, what did you do to help create the field guide and how'd you work and think like scientists?
Well, um, I, um, like, use some, like, magnifying glasses and, um, I, um, look closely, close to the tree and see what features it had.
Thank, Brendan, can you add to that?
Well, um, I was, um, um, I was, um, taking pictures of it and, um, learning, like, observing it kind of, and, um, learning about it, kind.
Okay. So Brendan, what technology tools did you learn to use, um, working at the field guide?
Um, um, I was using the, um, iPads to, um, like, take pictures and, um, with the pictures, um, we, um, studied, um, the pictures that were there.
So Aiden, can you add to that as well?
Well, um. I also use the iPad, but I didn't use it as much as I used the magnifying glass, so, um, um, I mostly use the iPad to, um, look up and look for pictures.
Okay, Aiden, how did you feel about working on projects like those?
Um, well, I, I, I like it a lot because in- instead of, like, staying inside, you get to go outside and, um, enjoy what, and research nice, nature.
Brendan, can you add to that as well?
Um, I really like, um, being in, um, nature, so it was, um, fun, um, getting to do it at school and, um, learning about the plants.
Okay, now we would like to, now I would like to show you the field guide.
Um, fun facts. Also called the shattered blue tree on the, or the white pillar. At least forty bo- bird species and several dozen mammal species eat the fruit of the shad bush. It may grow to fifteen to forty feet high and intended twenty feet wide. And, um, these right here are, um, are our sources, are the websites we used. And, um, these are the pictures of, um, some of the leaves. And, and, um, this is a little bit about it. The shad bush goes from it, from Native Americans that used the blossom of the tree to tell when the shattered, um, fish swam up the river, the flower, the flowers on the shad bush are white. Each bloom has, um, has, has five petals that are long, that are long sk- skinny ovals. The flower goes in groups or chunks on the tree branch. We also, um, we also see small, um, buds on the stems that later grow into leaves. And now here's Dagan.
Okay. How animals use the shad bush. One, many different birds eat the berries. Two, ants lay their eggs on the shad bush leaves. Three, squirrels, rabbits, and chipmunks eat the fruit and twigs. Four, spiders make, make, make in, make webs in the branches. Five, caterpillars eat the leaves. And six, bees love to be, li- love the pollen in the spring flowers. How people use the shad bush. Berries are used to make pie, I mean pies, jams, and jellies. Bush is, bush is used to decorate, as decoration, as decoration in gardens. The wood can be used to make tool handles. Leaves are dried to make tea. Young stems are used to make blankets. Parts of the.
Baskets.
Parts of the bush you, used by Native Americans to make medicines. And these are, um, drawings by our, by some of our students. That's Aiden. Shad bush poetry. Spiders make webs in its branches. It has white flowers in spring. Ants lay eggs on the leaves. Down the river fish go when this tree blooms. Birds find the berries yummy. Used to make paper. Service berry is another name for this tree. Has small red berries in summer. And this is, uh, painting by Ally. Thank you for having us tonight. This ends our presentation. Do you have any questions?
First of all, that looked really great. Really impressive that you guys made a book like that, because I don't know how to do that. I also didn't know that you could eat berries on a shad bush. Did you, did you guys try?
No.
No.
Okay. Who knew that? I mean, who knew that? And that's growing outside Wolf Swamp?
Yeah.
Who knew?
Are those the trees that got knocked down in the storm?
Uh.
And were replaced?
I don't believe so.
No.
No.
Those were, I believe those are Bradford pears out front.
Yeah. Yeah, those are Bradford pears.
Which type of, uh, what type of technologies you used to put the book together?
Um. The, um, um, the, um, iPads.
You made the right on the iPads?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Very, very cool.
And, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, please.
I have a question for you guys. What was, like, the most interesting or unusual piece of evidence that you came across when you were doing your research here?
Brendan, I think.
What surprised you the most?
Teacher question.
Um, um, that, um, um, I did, um, I s- that, um, I didn't know that, um, you could, um, eat the berries on it.
And if we tried them, Mr. Guile would've been way too obnoxious.
I didn't know that these blossomed when the shad came up the stream, which is, I thought that was really interesting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What grade are you guys in?
Third.
Third.
Third grade, okay.
Awesome job, guys.
What was your favorite thing about doing this project?
Um, being the center of attention. Um.
Know the feeling.
Getting to, um, go outside and observe it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know you liked that, I, especially.
I'm great. Anybody else have any questions?
So do you guys think you would do this again? Do another type of ebook?
Yeah.
If you want us to, we'll do it.
Project.
Yeah.
If you want us to, we'll do it.
Um, who thought of this idea to do a field book?
Um.
It was probably, uh, yeah, I mean, we had many, um, many meetings leading up to the actual, um, the actual experience, the natural residents coming to Wolf Swamp, and really Helen Anne, uh, presented a variety of, of opportunities, and we, we really gravitated towards the field guide, thinking that this would be, uh, something, uh, that would, uh, endure our time, you know, at the elementary school, so, uh, it's a wonderful gift. It has, um, and I'm just trying to find it right off, but it has locations, here you go. So, in the bottom left, you have the interactive component where Mrs. Longen, yeah, be careful with that. Where Mrs. Uh, Longenecker tagged the location of the plant, so.
That's great.
You can go, you can go onto our website, download the ebook.
Yeah.
Come on to campus and, and go and find those, those species.
Were you also?
Oh, is this the?
Yeah.
Were you surprised at how many species of plants were just right, you know, outside where you have recess?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am, actually. Pretty surprised about that, too. Very cool. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it. You guys are so impressive. This is great.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I saw all your parents back there videotaping this, and it will be on LCTV on YouTube in, like, two or three days, so you can also catch it on there. You might get a better angle. So, thanks so much and thank you, Mr. Guile, for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right, moving right along into correspondence.
There is correspondence for this meeting. Um, an emailed letter from the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the most improved vocational student for two thousand fourteen and outstanding vocational student for two thousand fourteen. Long Meadow students recognized are Benjamin Wiseman for Graphic Communications One and Frank Barberry, um, in Land- Landscaping and Horticulture One. Um, there's also an emailed letter from Jessica Reyes, uh, dated May second regarding a full-day kindergarten sliding scale proposal.
Fantastic. Seeing no visitors, we're gonna move on to school committee comments, and before we open it up for school committee comments, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that Superintendent Doyle is not here tonight. Uh, she is in the hospital. She's having surgery tomorrow, and we, you know, wish her well, and, uh, it has not stopped her from emailing and texting a lot, that's for sure. Uh, but she's in great spirits and she should be back very soon, um, minor surgery. Also, tomorrow night is annual town meeting, and, uh, doors o- the meeting begins at seven o'clock. I think doors open around six thirty. Um, so you must be a registered voter in order to vote, uh, but you can attend as a guest if you're not. Talk on you, Kelly. So, other than that, school committee comments.
Tom, that's right.
Okay, seeing none, we'll move right along into discussion of the Williams Middle School boiler. Uh, last time we met, uh, Town Manager Crane was here, and he spoke to us about, uh, some issues, uh, regarding the replacement of the boilers and the estimate that was provided to the DPW originally. Um, that is included. It's an updated estimate from Cody and Son, who is the, I guess, preferred vendor for the DPW for the boilers. Last time we met, we kind of said that we would wait to get the updated information from the DPW, which we have. And I guess, you know, based on the information that we have provided, uh, obviously, this con- this conversation is in the context of a much larger question about the future of the middle school buildings, but in the meantime, we do know that we have a significant issue with both the boilers at Williams, and on tomorrow night's town meeting warrant, we do have a warrant article for capital to, well, it says replace in the warrant, but we now know that it's replaced portions of it, um, and so we just need to make sure that, I mean, I guess the, the point of bringing this back up tonight is to make sure that we're all comfortable with just this portion of it being replaced versus the entire boiler, um, and so I'll open it up for discussion.
And this is, to clarify, this is for one boiler only?
Right.
And the warrant states for two?
Yes. So there was obviously some, yeah, incorrect information provided, uh, to school committee about this. Um, John?
Yeah, I was under the impression that Mr. Crane was gonna be here to explain what was going on.
They have a select board meeting, so he's unable to attend. Their meeting at the police station.
Could not have sent someone to take his place, sir. Okay.
I thought even in our last meeting with Mr. Crane that we were still discussing replacing the parts of both boilers for the cost that we had originally thought that they would be fully replaced. So how did it now go from replacing two to replacing parts of two to now just replacing parts of one?
It's a great question.
I'm guessing the cost?
I think the cost.
But how could we be so off is sort of the, I, I don't get it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly don't want to, you know, speculate about what happened. Uh, you know, obviously, there's a breakdown in the process the DPW uses when going out and getting estimates, um.
Can we operate on one boiler like this?
Yeah, from my understanding, we primarily utilize one boiler. The other one is for, you know, it, it is essentially, it's redundant, um, and it's there in case the other boiler goes down. I know it carries a little bit of a load, but Tom, do you know any?
Yeah, I think when we get, uh, extremely cold temperatures, it's difficult to, uh, make it, uh, comfortable by the time staff starts arriving in the morning with just one boiler. We did have, uh, I believe, some work done on it, and we were, uh, limited to one boiler and it created some, some discomfort in terms of the atmos- the, the temperature within the building, so, um, but it is, it has happened, and being that they are replacing the boiler, uh, the sections that are a problem, maybe it'll work a little, you know,
It'll take some.
higher temperature and hopefully warm up quicker, but, um, it, it can work. It can keep the building, uh, heated.
You know, I mean, obviously, I think another ish, or another way that we can go about doing this beside, you know, is, is to fix once, this one piece now that's in this estimate in front of us. And then potentially go back to the town, fall town meeting and ask to utilize free cash for, for some of this replacement. I mean, it's a possibility for sure.
Are we just throwing good money after bad, though, if we're not, by sort of taking the chance that hopefully with this fix, I mean, I guess we need someone else who knows.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're addressing the, the worst of the two boilers, so hopefully the one that is not getting the attention from this investment will, uh, continue to work and not be a problem. With this replacement, hopefully we'll, we'll have years' worth of maintenance or, you know, problem-free heating. But there's no guarantee the boilers are old and, which was why we pursued this request in the first place.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
So let's say that, you know, in the next few years, when these parts are still in working order, would we be able to utilize them in another school building at least, or is this sort of like, once we put them in here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure I can answer that question. I don't know that it's a simple retrofit. Moving a boiler from one location to the next and connecting it to the, all of the, the infrastructure of a, of a different building, but I think we would need to get clarification or, uh, a more in-depth answer from Adrian on that.
Sorry.
So, I mean, I, I guess at, at this point, we're kind of left with just the option of going forward with the job as, you know, outlined in this estimate and taking care of, you know, what we can take care of with a hundred grand.
I'm guessing that's going to be explained tomorrow night at the town meeting with the warrant?
Your guess is as good as mine.
Okay.
And if it's not, are we able to ask?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we should. I mean, I think that, you know, we, we should ask tomorrow night, you know, what, what the plan is, um, especially because the project's scope outlined in the job estimate is different than the scope in the warrant.
They're not voting on this tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're voting on, on an allocation of money for it.
Is that allocation more or less than this quote?
Uh, it's like twelve grand more.
But the words are very different. The words state.
Says replacement.
And this is actually just, I mean, fixing. So that's very, very big difference.
And didn't it also state high efficiency in the warrant, and this is not a high-efficiency boiler?
And did they take money out of our budget because they thought we were gonna have high efficiency?
Pardon?
And because we thought we were gonna have high-efficiency boilers replaced, did they take money out of our budget?
I believe they did.
Okay.
Yep.
Was that like twenty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just need all the facts. I'm sorry, I know, I'm not.
Fifty thousand, isn't it?
Well, that's.
Two different things.
That's two different buildings. This is the one for the.
This is Williams.
Williams.
Just the boilers.
All right, I just trying to get all my facts together.
I just want to suggest that maybe we ask for a second estimate or something from another company where there's been, you know, problems we were, we thought, you know, from, I'm just looking, we have only one person that's been involved in this. Is it
Mm-hmm.
something that we can just get a second opinion on at all?
We could.
Obviously, we need to do something. That's not a, you know, we can't just let it sit there broken, but can we, since there's been.
You know, I think, I think part of it is a personnel issue that is not within our scope. You know, and obviously, we've had, this is just the latest example of, of us getting provided incorrect information before town meeting, and, uh, you know, our building's suffering the consequences of that. And quite frankly, it's frustrating that, uh, you know, that this continues to happen year over year with, uh, regardless of the project, whether it's the windows at Center School, or it's the lockers at Williams, or it's the boilers at Williams. It's, uh, incredibly frustrating that this continues to happen. But, you know, we, we can certainly request that the DPW find, uh, you know, seek a second opinion on it.
Just another opinion from another vendor, just in case this isn't a good fix.
Right.
Even a second opinion, like, I mean, even when I'm getting things done in my home, I have three or four people look at them. And they, sometimes there's a variety of answers as to what the fix is. So like, one person.
Making it so hard to tell.
I'm sorry, I'm not a tip-topper.
I, you know, I, I think regardless, though, we, the town meeting is tomorrow.
Right.
Something that we, I'm not comfortable going another winter with.
No.
It's something that.
And I'm not either, yeah, no, I.
So, I'm, our backs are kind of up against the wall right now with this one, where.
Yeah, I mean, the other solution that's been floated in the past is to just have the allocate, amend the, the warrant articles or the allocation gets moved into the reserve fund, and we can ask to get it out, you know, without having to go to town meeting and utilize it for a different project or a different part of this project. I don't know how beneficial that is.
I, I think it's just, um, you know, like you guys said, town meeting's tomorrow night. We're here tonight with the expectation that we were going to have, you know, proposals and discussion, and yet no one's here to discuss it, and I understand that Select Board has a meeting, but we are kind of stuck now between a, a rock and a hard place, knowing that the boilers need to be replaced, yet we all have questions that can't be answered.
Right, and I mean, uh, again, I'll, you know, I'll go back to what the large, the question that they continue to ask us is, and it's a, it's a valid question, is what are, what's the future of Williams look like? And that's obviously not a, a question we're prepared to answer today.
Right.
Which, you know, and, and in terms of that question, is it throwing good, good money after bad to replace the entire boiler, or is this the work that's necessary? But, like you just said, we don't have an answer on that.
Right, we don't, and it's just, you know, unfortunate that it's, you know, twenty-four hours from town meeting when decisions are gonna be made, and those of us who should have information don't, don't have anybody to ask questions to. And so I can understand and appreciate everyone's frustration.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, when is this job estimate, actual work gonna be done?
I assume after July first, right?
Yeah, I mean, if the money, if the, the article for the capital projects is approved, the money would be available July one. Yeah, I mean, if the money, if the article for the capital projects is approved, the money would be available July 1 to contract with a vendor. So even though Cody gave us a quote, it would still have to go out to bid, where multiple vendors could submit a bid based on the scope of the work that was designed.
And I see where you're going with this, John, because on the quote, it says that the quote is good only through May 31st.
Even if the quote was good until September 1st, we still have to bid it. We have to do a formal procurement.
No, and I understand the bid process. My concern would be that this quote's good through May 31st, and we don't meet that deadline because of when free cash is certified and, or when the, the new budget cycle starts. This quote could very easily change.
Yeah, I mean, luckily, with regard to that, and there's a like twelve thousand dollar leeway in the warrant, but that's still obviously not comforting.
Right, but my, I guess my question is, if we're changing the, or if the warrant is going to be changed at town meeting, is the dollar amount in, going to change to this dollar amount? Or is the dollar amount going to remain at the hundred thousand that was originally published? And again, I'm guessing we don't have an answer to that.
Hang on one second. Oh, it says we'll take any action. Yeah, pretty much. I can't answer your question. There is a, as part of the warrant, there is a project reserve of ten thousand dollars that when projects run over by a certain amount, they can go back without having to go to town meeting. That is available to address small increases based on bids compared to estimates that are provided. So, but I don't know the answer to your question about whether or not the warrant article will be changed to reflect...
The amount will be changed.
Or if it'll be changed to reflect this amount plus a contingency.
I would just hope that going forward, since we've been trying to work so diligently with the town manager to come in, and the select board to come in with a balanced budget and help to bring forth a balanced budget to the town, that not leaving things till the last hour in the future, you know, hopefully, that consideration would be reciprocated.
Okay, so I guess at this point, we basically kind of have to take it at face value, right?
I guess.
To be continued?
To be continued tomorrow night on the floor of town meeting.
I'm just...
I'm with you. So, all right, good stuff. Moving on.
Not ideal, but...
Not ideal. Moving right along. Administrator's report, obviously, the superintendent's not here to deliver that, and it was not, there was not one provided. So if I have to speculate as to what you'd say, things are going great. School committee chair update, obviously, I think, like the rest of us, I've kind of just been preparing for town meeting. So not a whole lot else that has been going on. And I also wanted to mention two quick, one quick thing, which is that I've reached out to State Representative Ash, and kind of, and I've asked him to take a look at the Chapter 70 equation and see if anything he can do, any legislation he can help sponsor to change that formula so it's a little bit more in our favor as a community. The other thing is that I have reached out to the MAS C, and I have scheduled, or I'm in the process of scheduling, a orientation for whoever wins the June 3 election. So, you know, fun two hours with Pa Coria and Glenn Kuchar. Always something. Yeah, Liz knows. And just so everybody at home knows, by law, we all have to take an orientation called charting the course through our, our state committee. And it's pretty informative for new members. I think, I think they do a good job of it. And we're lucky that they come out here, because otherwise, whoever the new school committee member is on the 3rd has to go to a six-hour training somewhere else in the state, like Katie did.
What exactly do they cover?
Uh, they cover...
Everything.
Procedures, they cover collective bargaining, they cover, you know, what...
Open meeting laws.
Open meeting law, anything that you need to know about being an elected official. Yeah.
I didn't get that. I'm not asking for it.
We can arrange it, Joseph, if you want.
We'll let you know what the date is.
You can come sit in. All right, Joseph.
Similar to you, I've been preparing for town meeting. I'm just kidding. The year is winding down, so there's not much to report on. We did our year in review last, last meeting, and we're still working on those things. We're working with the administration on the open campus proposal. Then we're working with the IT department on the electronic report cards, which I understand is actually being implemented, so we're very excited about that. The class of 2014 will be hosting its prom May 29th at the Society Room in Hartford, Connecticut.
Really?
Yes.
That's nice.
Yes, it is very nice. I'll be there. The graduation of that class will follow on Monday, on Monday, June 2nd. My class, the class of 2015, is eagerly awaiting finals. We are currently planning a barbecue for Friday, June 6th, to celebrate our arrival as seniors. We are currently accepting applications for executive positions for the senior class play, which, I don't know if anyone knows, but we've announced is actually going to be High School Musical, put on next...
Wow.
This November. We're very excited for that, about that. We've gotten some great applications from some great members of our class, and so we think we're going to do a great job with that. The student faculty advisory council, also known as SVAC, is, has adopted and ratified a job description for the new position called Vice President of Activities, which is a fifth-class officer senior year. That class officer will, whose duties will be focused on events such as the play and Powderpuff will be instrumental in helping us accomplish the things that need to get done, so we're very excited about that. And lastly, I just had a couple, just one question. I was looking at the budget, and I just...
Tom?
On the budget by location, I was just looking at it, and I had a quick question. Pupil Services is broken out as thirty-three percent of the budget, and I just wanted to know, what exactly does that cover?
Pupil Services is, it's our special education department. So that covers the cost of added replacements, it covers the cost of testing, it covers salaries, obviously, for psychologists, for teachers, materials. Am I missing anything? Legal expenses?
Paraprofessionals.
Paraprofessionals. Oh, paras are in there, too.
Thank you.
All the stuff that goes on across the hall.
Right. And that is, that is everything. Congratulations to the boys' track team for winning our meet today. I had to leave early, but very important to be here. But yes, congratulations to us and the girls. I believe the girls won also. Are there any questions as to the happenings of the school? Yes?
Can you tell me what night prom is?
It's a Thursday night. It's May 29th.
Okay.
Six to eleven, Hartford Room, Connecticut.
Oh, is that what you just said?
Society Room, Hartford, Connecticut.
You said something else.
With Tennessee to follow. And then, in case you're also wondering, Monday, June 6th is graduation.
Yes.
Second.
Yeah, I mentioned second. June 6th is our barbecue.
Just so everybody in school committee knows, we all have the opportunity to go.
The prom?
Yes. Society room, I mean, it's got to be nice.
We're going to be Michael State? Let's go over here.
Were you talking about graduation?
Yeah. So we all, and I guess we're kind of expected to go as well, so...
What time is the graduation?
What time is graduation? Six?
Seven.
Seven?
Eight.
In the morning?
PM.
PM.
Monday, June 2nd, 7:00 PM.
And Diane will have invitations or tickets for us.
7:00 PM at Symphony Hall in Springfield. Graduates must be there by 6:15. Actually, just so everyone's aware, the two grand marshals have been elected from my class, Anthony Ferreira and Ally Mitchell, so congratulations to them.
Nice.
And we've also elected our ushers, Jonathan Mack, Benjamin Grotsky, myself, and a few other people. And so congratulations to all those people, so we'll see you guys there.
Yes, and if anybody up, anybody on school committee has a member of the class of 2014...
Fourteen.
That they would like to hand a diploma to, just let me know.
I want to hand one to Janet's daughter. She would take it from you.
She would take it from you. She would not take it from Janet.
You may hand her her report card, or her diploma.
She's my babysitter if I were to go that night.
You better find another one.
And before we go, or before I go, I actually have one more question, based on correspondence from a couple meetings ago. I was just taking it over, and it's, it was entitled "Children and Technology", and it talked about Wi-Fi and radiation exposure. And I was just wondering if we ever, like, if we had any information, because I read it, and it was actually very interesting that to... And I think it's actually more of a broad issue, because obviously, there's not just Wi-Fi at schools, there's Wi-Fi at home and at work. So I was just wondering if the committee ever looked at any information regarding students being exposed to radiation.
No. Have we? Well, we did with the cell phone tower proposal for the roof of this building, but that was the last time I think it came up.
Yeah, I believe the superintendent and Mr. Warrenda met with the individual who sent the communication some time ago, so...
Oh, great. Yeah, I don't think we should, in my own, you know, I think we should remove Wi-Fi from schools. I think it's very harmful. And there was also one more piece of correspondence I was looking at. I went to pay my, my bill for the cafeteria.
Thank you.
As everyone should.
Thank you.
And I was, I found this, and I also was reading the correspondence about it. Apparently, there's an electronic fee charged to pay online.
There is. If you use a credit card, there's a much lower fee if you do a withdrawal from your checking account.
And my question...
But you don't have to pay online.
Can parents give their student a check and have them bring it to, like...
Absolutely.
Or can they mail it to the main office?
To the food service office, or they can hand it to any of the cashiers at the lunch, during lunch service.
Great. All my questions.
Good to know. All right, moving right along, unless there's any questions for Joseph?
He's ready.
Oh, Joseph, what day is the award ceremony?
It's, the award ceremony is May 21st. It's a Wednesday at 9:30 in the gym.
And everybody is obviously invited to that as well, and I think, I don't want to ruin the surprise, but we're all getting invitations at home. Invitations in the mail.
9:30 in the morning?
9:30 in the morning.
Any seniors who are listening, you should report there by 8:45. I got it all right here. There's actually, if anyone has any questions, if you go on the high school website and click on the student office link, there's a link to a document giving all dates for all senior activities, such as the senior social, the award ceremony, the graduation, the rehearsal, the prom, and everything you need.
Great.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you, Joseph. All right, moving right along, finance sub.
Okay, the finance subcommittee met on May 7th, 2014, and we took care of some routine items, but the main thing is our discussion for town meeting. And that's evolved over time. So I want to just present a statement as it exists right now for the committee's deliberations. Okay.
Now, this is, which statement is this? Is this the one communications?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, we're asking town voters to support the school budget that we have approved, including the recent approved amendment. Now, this is an amendment of approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars that will be placed before the town meeting by Select Board Chair Marie Angelides. This is to move money which would have been, well, was allocated for the costs associated with the new high school. And because of some economies that we've been noticing, we think we can let this money be removed from the budget so that the budget can be balanced. And that's their contention, and the finance subcommittee right now is basically saying, we'll go along with that. Contingent on the fact that we've been assured by Mr. Crane, the town manager, that if there is a need for funding to cover our costs for the equipment that's in this new building, and that's largely where the electrical costs are coming from, that that money will be made available at the fall town meeting out of available funds. So that's basically the position we're going to take on, or that we're suggesting to this full committee to take on the proposal that will be made by chairperson of the select board, Marie Angelides, with respect to the budget. We also want to have a statement here. Our budget for 2015 does not offer free all-day kindergarten. We might be able to offer this approach in our budget for next year, fiscal year 2016. Our budget does offer an improvement over the current kindergarten policy. For example, we do away with the lottery approach, and we have lowered the tuition costs from approximately four thousand plus to three thousand dollars. And again, we do offer free half-day kindergarten. And we're going to ask people to vote their conscience on that issue. But that's separate from the contention that's going to be put forward, or the proposal put forward by chairperson of the select board, Marie Angelides. So I submit that for any discussion, clarification...
Awesome.
Debate, whatever.
Okay, cool.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, I guess, and a second. I'm unclear on these motions, but just to clarify what John said, it appears there's going to be two amendments tomorrow night.
At least two.
At least two. Who knows? It could be, could be more than that. Two we're aware of shaping up, so just to provide that sort of guidance. Now, I know the communications committee is, has also prepared something so we can, I mean, they're very similar based on what you...
Right, but I think John's proposal of what we're supporting, which is the First Amendment by Chairperson Angelides, is a simple procedural amendment that we are working together to present a balanced budget to Town Floor with the transfer of those utility funds. So we were not going to make a statement on that amendment. I think it's just, John brought up that, just that our consensus is, is enough that we don't have to speak to that. Communications was drafting a statement in regards to the second proposed amendment that we know of, which is the proposal by the Residents for Equality in Kindergarten Education in Long Meadow. And we, I know that's later on the agenda, so...
I mean, there's a motion, say, we might as well just put it all out there now and come up with a cohesive statement.
I think it's going to be right at the same time as...
Yeah, they're going to be...
There's only one time for amending the budget. So I would gather...
Okay.
That the select board, the chairperson will go first.
And then...
And then it's a question of whether the moderator's going to ask for a separate vote or allow amendments to fall. If that happens, things are going to get a little bit tricky.
Right.
Better bring your scoreboard.
It might get confusing, but, so you would like the...
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, John put, you know, his, I mean, a statement on, on the table, so we might as well put yours on, and then we can marry them.
So the communications subcommittee had come up, at last meeting, when we talked about accepting money if, if offered, we said we'd like to have a statement if asked, our position, the school committee's position on the proposed amendment from Residents for Equality in Education in Long Meadow. So this is what we've come up with. We're open to discussion. The school committee appreciates the time and effort that the kindergarten committee put into making full-day kindergarten possible for all Long Meadow students. While it is true that their recommendation was for a free full-day kindergarten program, the fiscal realities of the FY15 budget simply do not accommodate this suggestion. We were, however, able to eliminate the lottery system that has been in place for a number of years, and we were able to reduce the full-day kindergarten tuition by over twenty-five percent. The school committee has worked diligently to present a balanced budget at tonight's meeting while maintaining the excellence of Long Meadow Public Schools and ensuring that all students succeed. The school committee would like to clear up any misconceptions and state that we have no affiliation with the group Residents of Equality, for Equality in Education, in kindergarten education in Long Meadow. We respect the amount of time, work, and energy that has gone into the kindergarten debate, and should the will of the people be that more funding be allocated? We will provide full-day kindergarten at no cost. We do so with great reservation, knowing the impact that this decision will have on other valuable town programs and services. We would like to thank everyone for taking the time to come out this evening, and we urge you to vote your conscience.
Who prepared this?
This was the communications committee. This was the communications committee.
Which consensus?
Katie, Kim, and myself. So, any, we're open to any suggestions, since this is going to be read, you know, as a school committee statement.
So, I'll open it up to the floor before I add my red pen.
Michelle?
I just want to make sure that the message, I think, that was at the end is clear in the beginning, in case we lose people's attention, that it isn't necessarily our recommendation to do this.
Okay.
You know, I just want to make sure, in case people are tired, confused, that that part reads the clearest, I think, that-
So, maybe move that paragraph to the beginning paragraph?
I don't know, what is this, that would be a thought from me, because for people with short attention spans, I want to make sure they catch that part.
Did you reread that?
In the order that, Michelle?
Well, no, the particular thing that was discussed.
"We respect the amount of time, work, and energy that has gone into the kindergarten debate, and should the will of the people be that more funding be allocated, we will provide full-day kindergarten at no cost, we do so with great reservation, knowing the impact that this decision will have on other valuable town programs and services." So, to start our statement with that, and then go into why we cannot accommodate it?
And then, yeah, and then maybe, I have to say, again, we-
Say something.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, one thing that I would like to add is that, you know, we support, like John said in his statement, we support the budget that we approved at this, you know, in our meeting, I like that piece of John's.
Okay.
You know, I think additionally, I think it's important that we mention that we made, you know, deliberate decisions to prioritize the items presented in, or the items in this year's budget. You know, every budgetary item is deliberate.
As a matter of procedure, though, let's assume that chairperson Angelides makes the amendment as we expect.
Right.
Do we or do we not want to make a statement indicating our position on that?
This is the 154.
154 reduction? I mean, I think we can say that we are comfortable with it, or we can make a statement, I mean, I'm clear, I'm fine either way.
Were you saying you didn't want to make a statement?
I didn't see that we needed to, but if you feel more comfortable that we make a statement on it, I don't see a problem in doing so.
The reason I'd like some clarification is, I was under the impression last week that we were going to contest this, and I understand that it's now a consensus among people not to contest it, so I just want everyone to be on the same page here, if that's what you wish.
I remember John-
So, the question is, okay, we're not going to contest it, are we going to accept it, and then are we going to make a statement that we accept this proposal?
Okay, so I guess the first question is, is everyone comfortable with the amendment that Ms. Angelides is going to present? Is that the first question, John?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's the one that we anticipate.
Right.
She comes up with something else.
Right, with the anticipated, so, Michael, can we just get that first part out of the way? So, is, are we comfortable, and come to consensus, that we are comfortable with the amendment as we're anticipating?
And it can be as simple as, it goes right there, we are asking, no, I'll read it. "We are asking town voters to support the school budget that we have approved, including this proposed amendment, period."
Okay.
I like that.
I like that.
You can have that in writing later.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we're comfortable as consensus, as a group, that, with the proposed amendment, correct?
Yes.
And then we're comfortable with the statement, the very short, sweet, simple-to-the-point statement that John just read?
Yes.
For you to speak.
Should we clarify why we're okay with it? Because I know that last week I was at the PTO meeting at Blueberry telling people to vote no on it, so now we're okay with it, so I feel like I'd like to explain to them why we're okay with it now.
Well, it's basically, let's see if I can give what I've come to understand.
Because I feel like I stood up in front of a lot of people and I said something, and now we're-
With the opening of the new high school, we had rather high electrical costs, because we're frankly operating two buildings, the old Long Meadow High School and the new one, and once the transfer was made, we were anticipating increasing costs, but certainly not as much as operating two buildings, but, so we put money into the budget in anticipation that our costs for electrical use were going to remain high. It now seems like our costs are going down, as certain equipment measures in the new building are being worked out, so our electrical costs, we hope and trust, will continue to go down, so we can live without this money in the budget. If there's something that comes up to alter that, then the fall budget will make the adjustment.
And the select board has agreed to-
I mean, the fall town meeting will make the adjustment.
Or the town manager has agreed to-
And apparently the town manager has assured members of the committee that that's the case.
Yes.
Okay.
So, basically, it's just taking money that we thought we were going to need for electrical costs, not like educational, like student, utility costs.
And then, further explanation, it's not so much lighting, and that's what a lot of people, let's say if you're just driving by the building, that's what you think of when you see electricity, it's lighting. It's not the lighting, lighting's quite efficient, it's the fact that there are systems that move air through the building, and also some of the computer systems that eat up a lot of electricity. Okay? So, we think we're monitoring that effectively so we can operate the building efficiently and in a humane manner for the occupants without that money.
Even though the air conditioning's not on right now?
It's an anomaly. But so, Kim, would you like some-
Does that answer your question, Kim?
It does, I mean, yeah, I just feel like I've, there could be some parents, because they were not happy when they heard me saying that the budget that we're being asked to approve in the warrant is $150,000 less than the budget we approved in February. There was some, I mean, there were, you know, 30 or 50 people there, but there were some parents there, and they were vocal about our budget being low anyway to start, so they said to take another $150,000 out of it, they, I, yes, I know, to take $150,000 out of it, they were not happy about.
So, perhaps just a simple statement of, you know, this reduction is in our utility line, where, that we feel we can absorb, rather than educational expenses?
I think, yeah.
You'd be comfortable with that?
After further explanation as to why the cut was made, or the change was made in the budget, we feel comfortable under the terms that were negotiated ahead of time by Stephen Crane.
Could you repeat that again? I can't write that fast. After further explanation, we feel comfortable?
As to why this change in budget.
And utility line. So, the statement of, "We are asking town voters to support the school budget that we have approved, including the recommended approved amendment. After further explanation, we feel we can, we feel comfortable as to why this budget change is being made in the utility line." Is that-
Well, I get to say, make it simple, it's the consensus of the committee that we can live with this adjustment, period.
The consensus, go ahead.
But we have talked, but we can live with this adjustment, but the select board, or the town manager, whoever it is that agreed, has agreed that if, if it ends up that we don't have this cost savings, they have agreed to put it back into the budget for that use.
Okay, so the consensus of the school committee is that we can live with this budget, knowing that the town manager
That's all you apologize to me for.
Has assured us that if funds are needed
For the utilities?
For utilities.
They would add it back then.
They would be added, they would be available at fall town meeting?
Is that what it's going to be?
Okay, so now the statement would read, "We are asking town voters to support the school budget that we approved, including the recent approved amendment."
The recent amendment.
The recent amendment, I'm sorry, the recent amendment. The consensus of the school committee is that we can live with these, with this budget reduction, knowing that the town manager has assured us that if funds are needed for utilities in the future, they would be available at fall, made available at fall town meeting.
I think that works.
Okay, so we're comfortable with that statement being read in regards to the amendment from the select board? Type that up for you.
Thanks.
No problem.
So, a quick question, so we're talking about an increase in the reduction to the utilities? An amendment that will increase the reduction?
We're talking about an additional reduction.
And it, so an increase in the reduction? On the, it's like the line.
If you look at, Joe, if you look at the additions, though, there's $134,000 addition to the LHS electricity.
Okay.
So, it's that, plus 20 additional thousand that the select board voted to reduce the natural gas line at Williams, based on the expectation of two new boilers. So, that's how they came up with 154. So, really, we're reducing the addition, plus adding a little extra to it, for the Williams.
So, the addition, and then an additional reduction of 20,000?
20,000, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so now if we go back to
Moving, yes.
The statement for the second anticipated amendment.
How about a third one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I only prepared two statements, but for the residents for equality in kindergarten education amendment. So, if we move the section about recommending this with great reservation, knowing how this decision would impact other valuable town programs, services, going back to what we had started with, Michael, you had said, ending with John's statement of-
Supporting the budget we approved.
Okay. Of supporting the budget we approved. And you wanted something added in about deliberate decisions in preparing this year's budget?
Yeah.
Okay. So, go ahead, Kim.
I just feel like that's a very, I don't know, I'm not sure about the deliberate decisions. I guess I would need to know how that was worded.
Yeah, I was going to ask, could you give me some suggestions of how you'd like that worded?
Well, if I could.
Sure, John.
I'm thinking we should just have a statement, maybe wait until someone asks us for a statement, but let the proponents of the free all-day kindergarten make their case, and if someone asks the school committee, "What is your position on it?", then we clarify by saying, "Our budget for 2015 does not offer free all-day kindergarten, we might be able to offer this approach in our budget for next year, fiscal year 2016. Our budget does offer an improvement over the current kindergarten policy, we do away with the lottery approach, and we have lowered the tuition cost to $3,000. We do offer free half-day kindergarten. Vote your conscience on this issue. The attempt to add money to the school budget for free all-day kindergarten is not a school committee-supported position." Is that too confusing?
That's pretty straightforward.
I think part of it, John, was there's confusion out there about, people have alleged that school committee is trying to get their way with funding free full-day kindergarten by backing residents for equality, and I think we need to clarify that, that we are not affiliated with their group, nor did we put them up to this, because that is what is being said in various, from various different people.
So, can't we just say then, as a group, as a committee, we do not support the transfer of funds from the town budget to the, can we say that and keep it simple, because that's what we're not recommending, correct? Because it just doesn't-
Well, that's the committee's position, but do we want to say, "Vote your conscience"?
Yeah, no, I mean, not we're that, I-
I think people vote their conscience, and then tell them to do that.
Well, no, because there's some pressure on this committee, I understand there's some, no one's called me on this for some reason, but some have felt that we have not been clear enough in our denunciation of the proposed free all-day kindergarten, and then we're wondering if we were going to stand up and make those kinds of statements, and I don't think it's the consensus of this committee that we should be making that kind of statement. Maybe if the select board wants us to do something, they could send us a letter and tell us what they want us to do, and then we could write back, you know, but you've got less than 24 hours before this is going to be debated.
Right.
And just offer that as clarification.
Yeah, no, I just, I don't want to be, I think there was confusion at some point after our last meeting, that we were supporting this-
Initiative.
Yes, and so I do want to make that clear, that where we do want to provide a full-day kindergarten for free in the future, we do not think that right now, next year-
It's not the right choice now. For this year, for this school.
We don't want to jeopardize other valuable town services-
Right, exactly.
-in order to do that, which is why we came in with a balanced budget that unfortunately didn't include it.
The other piece that I think we need to leave off of the speech that I keep hearing is that we may be able to offer it next year.
Right, I don't think we can promise that.
I can't, I feel like if we say we may be able to offer it next year, we are going to have to offer it next year, and-
Whether we can or not.
Can we say we hope to provide it in the future, responsibly or something? I definitely think, because the goal is to offer it in the future, we just can't put a time limit on it, there, like, any other-
What if we say something along the lines of, you know, "While we aspire to be able to provide all children with access to free full-day kindergarten in the future, the fiscal realities of the budget did not allow, do not allow us to fund free full-day kindergarten"
In FY15?
In FY15.
Yeah, but, you know, if I could, you know, that's kind of a weasel word, people, you know, fiscal reality, what is reality here? It's what people want it to be. If you want certain programs to be delivered, you talk it up and you build a consensus and you get it done, or if you really think kindergarten's important and you're fixated on only having a certain amount of money, then you drop something, you're not fund something else. Alternatively, if you think it's important, along with all the other things we said are important, then you ask for more money, that's called an override, and that is one of the options. The way the select board in this town operates is they're constantly putting projects forward as if there was no option to ask the townspeople for more money. Now, that's something that, you know, you can pretend to be a fiscal conservative, but it's not fiscally honest, because you can ask for more money.
So, then would you rather-
So, let's not get into this, talk about fiscal realities force us to do things. We do pretty much what we think is proper.
So, then would you rather say that we chose to prioritize programs that have the greatest impact for the greatest number of students this year?
There's still things we weren't able to fund.
I think that's what we did.
We're all followers of Jeremy Bentham, utilitarian calculus, that's what it is, you know? Excuse me.
Didn't he get-
Utilitarianism.
Wasn't he taxidermied? Wasn't Jeremy Bentham taxidermied?
He was, had his body, yes, that's correct.
That's pretty good.
So, I mean, is that-
The greatest good for the greatest numbers, is that what we're talking about?
I think those are the decisions we made this year. We, you know, we chose to, we chose to prioritize programs that, you know, impacted students in grades K through A.
But, you know, those choices were not made in a vacuum, too, you know, I think that-
We considered all the options.
It's not just sort of like, you know, we considered all of these options, it wasn't that we just decided that this was number one on our list before we looked at the needs of our students, or the needs of our families, this is-
So, then do we say that we made deliberate decisions to prioritize these programs as they offer the greatest impact to the greatest number of students?
Maybe not deliberate, maybe we made
Conscious?
Conscious decisions.
Conscious is fine. Conscious is fine.
No? Again, an attempt, I'd like it to be concise, because supposedly it's in response to someone asking, "What is the school committee's position?", right? We're not just gonna volunteer this.
Right.
Unless you wanna volunteer.
I'm volunteering it right now, quite frankly.
Okay. Well, in fact, we should start off frankly, say, "The attempt to add money to the school budget for free all-day kindergarten is not a school committee-supported position." Okay? "Our budget for 2015 does not offer free all-day kindergarten." Skip the part we might be able to, and go to, "Our budget does offer an improvement over the current kindergarten policy. We do away with the lottery approach, and we have lowered the tuition cost to three thousand dollars. We do offer free half-day kindergarten. Vote your conscience on this issue."
So, the current budget offers an improvement, I'm just typing this up as we go along.
Current budget offers an improvement
Good, I'm gonna look at it.
Please. Over
Current kindergarten
The current kindergarten program. We eliminated lottery.
And we reduced the cost. And we increased the number of full-time positions.
And maybe, you know, reducing the cost by 25%, because people may not know what current tuition is.
Right. So, what, okay, so here's what I have, is a concise version of
Thank you, I'm glad you're typing and consolidating this.
Okay. "The attempt to amend the school budget is not a school committee-supported initiative. The school, Long Island School Committee is not affiliated with the group known as Residence for Equality in Kindergarten Education, nor do we support their proposed amendment to the budget. The current school, the current"
Nor do
Nor do we.
Nor do we support their proposed amendment to the budget?
I thought you said that at the very beginning.
All right, so it's a little redundant, I'm just
Okay.
Okay, so
Keep going.
Hang on. "The current budget offers an improvement over the current kindergarten program, eliminating the lottery system and reducing the cost by 25%. While we, and I added, "While we aspire to be able to provide all children with access to free full-day kindergarten in the future, the school committee made conscious decisions to prioritize programs that have the greatest impact for the greatest number of students. As a result, we support the budget we approved."
I'm comfortable with that.
Except, that's not my position. Are you gonna, are you claiming that there's gonna be seven people saying that? As a result, we support the budget we approved?
That's just what I have written down right now, but I'm, this is not, I mean, obviously, we've not voted, this is not a final statement, I'm just
Well, because, I thought we were gonna say something to the effect, we're not, we don't have a position. It's up to you, townspeople. You've come here tonight because you're concerned about it. Vote your conscience, but for purposes of clarification, we are not affiliated with this, this is not a school committee-supported amendment, and we have made some changes in the program that you should all be aware of. The program we offer next year is different from the one we offered this year. And then tick off the reasons.
So, you don't wanna say that you
But, you know, go ahead. What did you wanna
I would say, what about the part of, one of the reasons not supporting it, because we, about the services getting cut, did you say that?
That, yeah, that's all I want to make clear, that I don't want it to be at the expense of other things
Right.
Other town, valuable pro, town programs and services.
So, we cannot in good faith
Have we all used, that is
We cannot in good faith support the amendment that would cost at the expense of valuable town services for every citizen.
Okay, so then, what it now reads is, "The Long Island School Committee is not affiliated in any way with a group known as Residence for Equality in Kindergarten Education, nor do we support their proposed amendment on, to the budget. The current budget offers an improvement, the current proposed budget." How about the proposed budget?
Our current budget.
Our proposed budget?
No, our budget, not, separated from the amendment and what we have.
So, okay, so
We're trying to amend our budget.
Right, okay, so it says, "The Long Island School Committee is not affiliated with a group known as Residence for Equality in Kindergarten Education, nor do we support their proposed amendment. Our proposed budget offers an improvement over the current kindergarten program, by eliminating the lottery system and reducing the cost by 25%. While we aspire to be able to provide all children with access to free full-day kindergarten in the future, the school committee made conscious decisions to prioritize programs that have the greatest impact for the greatest number of students. We cannot in good faith support an amendment, support this amendment at the expense of the, of valuable town services for all residents, we encourage you to vote your conscience."
The only change that I would make is cost to families, you know, because we're, do you know what I mean? We reduce the cost by, to families.
Okay.
Because the cost of the program is higher, but it's the cost that's being passed on to families that's low.
We reduced, or we could just say, and reduce the tuition by 25%.
Did we also increase the number of full-time slots?
Yeah, we can do that.
It's open to everyone now.
So, that should be added, that's, that's another feature of our, of how our program for 2015 differs from the program of 2014.
Well, it says we eliminated the lottery system.
Of kindergarten to all students.
Yeah, making it accessible to all. It made it accessible to all.
All interested residents? All residents who wish to participate?
Unlike the previous lottery system, we
How many positions were there under the lottery system? The lottery was for all, all day, right?
And it was one class at each school. Right now, we have
So, it was a lottery for 25 positions?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Diane, how many students have registered now for half-day?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
And do we have two classes at each school right now, for full-day?
For full-day, yeah.
At least?
For full-day?
Oh, for next year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Next year that'll register.
How about one more timeline?
One more pass-through. "Long Island School Committee is not affiliated in any way with the group known as Residence for Equality in Kindergarten Education, nor do we support their proposed amendment to the budget. Our proposed budget offers an improvement over the current kindergarten program. Unlike the previous, unlike the previous lottery-based system, our new program opens kindergarten to all students who wish to go full-day and reduces the tuition by 25%. While we aspire to be able to provide all children with access to free full-day kindergarten in the future, the school committee made conscious decisions to prioritize programs that have the greatest impact for the greatest number of students. We cannot in good faith support an amendment at the expense of valuable town services for all residents, we encourage you to vote your conscience." And that line is a little wonky, but
Michelle, you're looking like you wanna say something.
No, I'm, I'm
Just listening still.
Wish she had printed yours out.
Yeah.
Had printed out so I could read it again.
Do you want me to read it? I know, I, we were working on this up till the last minute, that's why it's not printed. You wanna read it again?
Let me look at it and see if there's anything else.
Is this similar to what
What was your short version again? Can you read that? Is it gone? John's short version, I'm just wondering, are we too wordy, or, no?
I don't think we're too wordy. Because I think we've got a hit on all of those topics, like, like John has hit, it's the, you know, the changes we made.
Yep.
You know, but adding in why we can't support it because of the town programs that would be cut.
Right.
That we can't endorse that.
Okay.
Anything that didn't get funded this year?
That, that makes it a little bit too
We've done all of those previous statements that sort of, this is bare bones.
So, I'm comfortable with the, what you have right now
John, are you comfortable?
As being a statement.
Well, again, it's if we're asked, "What is the school committee's position?"
Are you comfortable with this as a position?
But that's not my position, that's the school committee's position.
Correct.
Right.
But are you comfortable with Michael reading that if this, if they ask, "What is the school committee's position on this amendment?", are you comfortable with Michael reading that as a school committee's
I don't think you need to add in any way to that first line, I mean, we're just not associated with it.
Okay, struck.
Okay.
And then the last sentence, "Vote your conscience", should be, that's a separate sentence.
Yep, so the last two sentences say, "We cannot in good faith support this amendment at the expense of valuable town services for all residents. We encourage you to vote your conscience."
Fine.
Let's
I like your answer. Because there's a lot of points that the group has brought up, and there are a lot of questions about validity, validity about them, so I just wish we could, you know, have a point-to-point about facts, like a fact sheet.
And we can always, you know, we can always have those, you know, those kind of bullet points ready that we've kind of put out there with all the fact sheets that she, that Janet and Maria typed up and put on the website. And if we're asked direct questions about them, we can respond by utilizing those.
I will gladly bring my two-inch binder with me.
Sure. Kim?
You're good with Michael's statement? Okay.
All right, so
So, we're good, and I will type up the other statement to get it to you if, for the, the First Amendment.
Okay, great.
For
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion carries.
So, we now have two statements.
We have two statements, we have the statement with regard to the Select Board amendment, and we have
For the utilities?
A statement, if asked, our position for the kindergarten amendment.
Now, another thought is, if someone asks, "Where will the cuts come if this passes?", our answer is
I'm deferring to the town manager.
Yeah, our answer is, it's not gonna come out of our school budget.
Well, especially
If this passes, it will be added to the school budget.
Right.
Just for purpose, so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah.
But it means they're gonna take money from other parts of the town budget, or whatever. Now, that's up to the Select Board to come up with.
Right.
And I understand, again, this is hearsay, I guess, but I understand they're having a, they are scheduling a meeting for Wednesday morning. If this passes, where they're going to make their cuts or adjustments.
Yeah. That is, that is true, Diane has booked the room.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night?
Yeah.
Okay, Wednesday night, or
And I do know, and this is not hearsay, I do know for fact that last Monday morning, the town manager did have all the department heads in, and they did prioritize a list of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts, and then, you know, the Select Board will figure out, of those eight hundred thousand, what four hundred they're gonna choose.
But I think
But those are under embargo till tomorrow's town meeting.
Well, I think that any questions directed as to what cuts would be made, what programs are you looking at, you know, eliminating, I think all of those questions need to be directed to the town manager and to the Select Board, because it, it's the town budget that they're now asking about, it's not the school committee's budget.
And it's not our place to say what, what they're gonna, you know, but I think it is also important to recognize that should this amendment pass, our basis is higher, but the revenues to the town don't necessarily match the base, so we may still be behind as far as what we think our basis versus what the town is able to provide next year. So, I mean, it's not necessarily advantageous for us.
That's what I would really like people to understand, that even if it does get funded next year, it's still gonna be a challenge next year to
Right.
Fund, even if that base is added to our budgets.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not advanta, it's not an advantageous thing for us to, you know, to take on, I mean, you know, ideally, if we're gonna do this, we would do it in a, in a way where we're able to sustain it, right?
Which is the goal.
Which is the goal.
Which is why
It's just, some people are impatient.
We didn't recommend it for this year because we don't have sustainable funding for the program.
There you have it.
Moving along.
Anything else for finance? Okay.
Oh, wait, Tom has
We also discussed the sliding scale, that was
From the
Proposed. Correspondence.
So, yes, and, yeah, all right, we had a discussion on the proposal from a townsperson offering some ideas about a sliding scale, and after examination, we decided to reject the proposal. So, we're staying with our own sliding scale.
I know we can't, obviously, it would be way too late to implement it for this year, but like, did you discuss it, like, for the, thinking about it in the future, or no? It's just not a good option, a hundred percent?
Well, the, part of our discussion was that she didn't show us the math of how she was gonna have the first group be free from zero to fifty thousand per family, and then go to five thousand for people making
Over a hundred.
Five hundred thousand. She just, I mean, we'd have to really look at some particulars, so
And I think part of our discussion was that we didn't feel it fair to all of a sudden increase certain people's tuition while providing others at no cost, there was no balance, along with, how could we project that that, that with the demographics, that fund balance would come up to what we need every year? There would be no way to anticipate that. So, without a lot more explanation and numbers, and that would be adding a lot of work for the business office in terms of collecting documentation for, for household incomes, we just didn't feel that it was in the best interest of where we were right now.
I'm just curious. I know, I tried to come, I just couldn't come listen to the com.
Did you wanna explain that?
Kim, if I could, and this is in anticipation or in response to your question, next year, I think we should have a full-fledged discussion about the value of free full-day kindergarten. Does it offer a pedagogy that's beneficial to children? Or is it harmful to children? Now, I haven't heard anyone argue that this actually hurts children. So, instead, it's always been, yes, this is a great program, however, it costs a lot of money. And those are two different things to think about, okay? Because we're constantly asking ourselves, "Is this worthwhile?". I mean, if you're told your children need, you know, medical equipment or whatever, you're not gonna say, "Well, gee, I don't know if we can afford that." You'll probably figure out how you're gonna get it, if you value, you know, the service that's gonna be offered. You follow my, my point? That's the kind of debate I think we should have. And I thought we were gonna have way back in January, but that's a whole other question. Maybe we'll have it next year, I hope it's like that.
But I do think, John, you're right, is that it's something that we've committed to keeping on our radar, that it wasn't, this is the final decision and, and we're not gonna look at it moving forward. I think we all, you know, when we agreed that we saw the value in the program, that we all committed to, well, we can't do it this year, but we wanna keep it on our radar screens and, and keep revisiting it so that we could get to that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that. All right, so moving
I think that's it for
Yeah, that's the thing else?
Finance Subcommittee?
One more thing, John, we also, no, there was a discussion, there's a warrant article number sixteen regarding the establishment of a revolving account for receipt from sales from vending machines for school-related expenses, and the superintendent recommended to the finance sub that those receipts be used for either student activity count audits or any literacy program materials that might be needed above the budget, so she just brought it forward to finance sub to make sure they were aware of what this warrant article, the funds would be used for.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's a warrant article that has been repeating every year it comes up.
Correct, John.
It has to go before town meeting.
Correct. Requires town meeting approval to establish the, the revolving account.
Okay, thank you.
Vending machines, we don't have any vending
You do not, you used to have vending machines, there are some in the other schools. We also receive an, an annual payment for a contract that we have, this is the final year of that contract.
They're like, they're like in teacher rooms and stuff like that.
Are they returning here, or are they being phased out there, or is everything
They're gonna be phased out, I think we're gonna look for a different alternative to what was previously here. It used to be Gatorade and water machines, Gatorade is no longer be sold during the school day, so we're gonna look for some healthier choice machines that we've been approached on having available to students.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Kim.
I have a question about the track one.
Yes.
The warrant article, I just actually approached in the grocery store, first time The warrant article. I just actually approached in the grocery store. First time I've been approached, asked in the grocery store.
Read a passage.
If they were going to get their track this year. And I, and so I went back and I read the warrant article and I see that it's to resurface the track and not replace the track. Now, our track's been condemned. Is that correct?
The track has been deemed unsafe by the DPW director in previous years, but it has been open and repatched several times.
It's not used for competitive meets.
We practice on the track. We don't, all of our home meets are at Islam Meadow High School or other high schools as home meets competing against other schools.
Because of safety issues?
And, yeah, but in previous years, there was also the issue of the construction here.
Yes.
Okay.
But this year, like, for example, we had a home meet today at Islam Meadow High School.
Which is not really home.
I don't know, actually. In, we've, in the past, we've had home meets at Islam Meadow High School against other high schools.
So do we pay Islam Meadow to rent that?
I believe so.
Oh, that's interesting. Do you know how much?
I don't know that. I don't know for sure that we do rent it or not, or if it's just an agreement to assist us why our track is unusable.
So my question is, the cost has, is the same person that's in charge of getting the estimate to resurface versus replace in charge of getting the boiler estimate?
Uh, yes.
That's a very good question.
And the center school, I'm just, just-
No.
No, it was the director of DPW and the town's engineer who met with a vendor on the track.
Okay, and was there a huge difference in replacing? Like, was it twice as much to replace it?
Yeah, I believe, and again, I've not seen any numbers. My recollection was the full replacement was, in replacement of the substructure was like 150,000 or 160,000 dollars.
But if I'm, if I remember correctly, the substructure was in good condition.
Most of it. My understanding is that the amount that's listed in the warrant article is to replace the stretch along the home bleachers where the most traffic is and is in the worst condition underneath, and then all of the top surface is being replaced and lined.
So to replace part of it and resurface all of it?
Replace part of the substructure and replace all of the top-
Rubber.
Rubberized material and lining.
So this would allow them then to use it for home meets again?
Yes, it would.
Do we know how long that lasts, resurfacing versus replacing lasts?
No.
Because I'm just, if we're talking like a $90,000 job versus maybe, you know, $40,000 more to, and one lasts five years and one lasts 20 years? I'm just wondering.
The only thing I can tell you is that a full replacement only has a useful life of about 10 years anyways. We're about 12 now, I believe, with our current track.
Okay.
So I don't know what the estimated useful life of what we're going to receive from, from this proposal.
Is that something that we can ask at the town floor? I'm sorry.
I could try to get the information for you before. I know Mr. Reibel will not be available tomorrow night, but I can check with the town engineer to see if he has that information.
I'm just wondering, because I know that if we're, the floor's going to be full of amendments, so I'm just-
We cannot amend this one.
I can amend it.
Was there, was there an answer to the original question, which, how long, like, would this be happening, like, when this would happen if it was approved tomorrow night's meeting?
Would it happen in the fall?
I believe the summer would be the ideal time, assuming we can get a vendor. Of course, everybody who is having a track repair or replacement done will be looking to get it done in the summer prior to fall sport. So we may be able to move as soon as the money's approved tomorrow night. The CPA has a little more flexibility with their funding because they usually have availability sooner than the general fund, which becomes available on July 1st. So it's something we can talk to the town after tomorrow's meeting.
CPA dollars are already, they've already been raised and appropriated into the community preservation funds. So the money's already in our accounts.
But I don't believe it's gone to bid yet, or even been placed out for bid yet.
Correct, but we could do it immediately and enter into a contract and not have to wait until July 1, if it were-
Which does buy us a little bit more time.
So ideally, it would be completed before our fall sport season of 2015 school year?
Ideally, yes.
In the perfect form.
That is our goal, is to have it available for the fall.
And community preserv-, and just so you, to your point, Kim, community preservation articles cannot be amended on the floor.
Okay. Just, people ask me questions, I feel like I should, you know.
Is it too late to ask why we have to have this rubberized track? I mean, why couldn't they just go with an old-fashioned cinder track?
Some of it had to do with one, maintenance, and two, the injuries associated with the different type of materials, that this is better for the individuals who use the track compared to the old-fashioned cinder track that-
Are there any school systems that still have old cinder tracks?
Not that I'm aware of, John, but I don't visit all schools.
This is New England, and the winter must take a tremendous toll on, on that stuff that the track is made of. Well, that's, that's beyond.
I'd have to guess a big portion of that was probably due to the injuries. It hurts a lot more to run on concrete than it does to-
I'm not saying concrete.
Well, not, I mean, just, the track is very comfortable to run on, as opposed to, I mean, I've never personally ran on cinder.
That crushed, kind of chalky stuff, right?
Yeah. I mean, it was like that, like, up until like 1999, I think.
I was actually asked a question in a similar manner, and I was wondering if anyone had an answer. What was the reason that the school committee, if this decision was ever made, I, I told the person I would clarify, not to, not to pursue a turf field inside the track?
It's a good question. It's come up. Several years ago, and I think, John, you were on the committee at the time, so you can probably speak a little bit better, but there was, as part of the options for this building, there was a set of pieces called ad alternates. The hydraulic lift or the electronic lift, and the gym was an ad alternate. It was not originally part of the building's scope. So we were able to utilize some of the money as part of the building project for those things. It was put on the table as an ad alternate. It did not pass school committee. I think it, it was like a five-four vote, if I recall. Do you remember that?
Yeah, I think it was on environmental grounds.
Yeah, the state of Connecticut-
Why we didn't go for synthetic astroturf kind of thing.
Okay.
Because we're on grass up there now.
Yes, we are.
That being said-
I think it was on environmental grounds. If memory serves, Mary Vogel was one of the opponents of buying that much plastic stuff to affect the environment.
The people I've talked to are under the impression that it was actually private funding set up, not public funding.
That's a separate issue. So, yeah, so what, there was, there's, there used to be a very functional, they're kind, they don't really function as much anymore, the Youth Sports Council,
Okay.
which was, and they had said time, you know, for years that they would find the private funding. And they were waiting for community, for the laws surrounding Community Preservation Act to change, because up until two years, last year, actually, you couldn't use it for recreation. And so you can actually use the community preservation dollars for the staging of the turf, but you cannot use it for the turf itself. And so they were going to kick in the money for the turf. Now, that's never materialized, and no one has ever approached us for that option. The only time it's ever been on the table was in, I think it's 2010, 2011, when, you're right, John, Mary Vogel did come to the committee. And it was, I think, the same year the state of Connecticut had released, I think it was a pretty damning study of environmental impacts and accidents.
So, so public money wasn't used due to environmentally reasons and private money never materialized?
Private money was never brought forward. It wasn't even a matter of materializing. No one's ever, no one's ever approached us. You know, there's been a million conversations. This, that, that right there was the main reason why the track didn't get, did not get approved last year to be done, was because people were concerned on community preservation that we'd be putting this turf in. Well, you know, that was not a great reason to, you know, put the community at a, in a safe, you know, a risk, safety risk. And quite frankly, if we ever did go forward with a turf, um, you know, there are plenty of turf manufacturers that I'm sure install new turfs around existing tracks. And if there was damage, that's why they have insurance. So, but like I said, nobody's ever approached us, no.
Thank you.
Moving right along, unless there's any more finance updates. Okay. School Building Committee. Bobby Barquette has invited us for a tour of the, of LHS, a in-depth tour, so that we have, so we can get a real understanding of the systems working in here. And so he said that if we can throw him a couple of dates, that he would, he would be interested in giving us a more in-depth tour of-
Is this a behind-the-scenes tour?
It's a behind-the-scenes tour.
During school day or at the end?
He said, I mean, maybe even on Saturday, I think, is what he was saying.
Not during school?
Not during school.
I put, school's over.
I'll tag along.
You have to come.
We could also do, we could also do an afternoon.
That really sounds good to me.
For, before our meeting?
The 19th.
One night? Could we do that?
About five o'clock or something.
We could do it before our meeting one night, for sure. Yeah, we could do a five o'clock.
Not next week.
27?
We could do the 27.
No.
No?
We have.
Or 5:45.
How about the 16?
It's going to take an hour.
This Friday? No?
Not on Fridays.
No good.
I work on Fridays. Not that you should make your decision based on my story.
I got to tell you, we weren't.
That's what everyone else is going to do, you know, that's not good for me.
I'm good for Friday.
16, I can do the 16th, the 23rd.
I can do the 16th.
Friday, the 30th.
We could do, I don't know, do you want, I mean, who cannot do Friday, the 16th?
What time are we going to do it on Friday?
Fridays.
Fridays are tough.
Well, they're, I mean, any time between 3:00 and 6:00 is tough for me, so.
All right, so it sounds like Friday's out. What about, okay, so next week, what about next Friday, the 23rd? Before Memorial Day weekend. So you're going, again, what about, what about Thursday, the 22nd?
Before the technology fair?
It's the technology fair.
What if we did it at the time of school committee next Monday?
Memorial Day.
The following Tuesday.
27?
No, I mean, like, where a school committee would happen, so Monday, the 19th.
Monday, 19th? We could do Monday, like, at 3:30 or 4:00.
Whatever you want to do.
I have, I have you make stuff.
I can do later Monday, just that time, like, I'm driving kids.
You want to do Monday at like, what about Monday at 5:00?
How long is this going to take?
Maybe till 6:00?
An hour to cover the whole thing?
Well, I mean, most of us know what the majority of the building looks like.
I've seen it a couple of times.
What's wrong with the 23rd?
I can't tell if you're joking.
Have we, someone put the date?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
The problem is, we all have children that we have to drive around between 3:00 and 6:00.
Get them a walking school bus.
I am trying. That's the last thing that was on the tape. What did you just say?
Monday, the 19th at 5:00? Okay, now, for, no, okay.
No, I mean, I can, I can do that. I've-
What about, do we say Thursday, the 22nd yet?
No, that's the technology fair.
Oh, yeah, that's where we did say that.
But the tech fair starts at 6, right?
What time's the tech?
There'll be setting up. There'll be a lot of people on the building.
Oh, okay, I got it.
I don't know, it's hot in here. What about, what about Sunday morning?
Sounds good.
Like, Sunday, like, around 10?
It was me.
Forget it.
Anybody want to tour?
What day?
Sun, this Sunday, before, before Lameta days?
Sorry.
Um, I'm actually running a booth at Lameta Days, so.
Joseph?
I'll be quiet.
Honestly, Sunday?
Can we, can we look for, like, quote, like, the end of the school year where it's not so chaotic for everybody?
Do you want to maybe go into the first or second week of June?
I was thinking more like the second or third week of June.
Okay.
Like, once, I feel like everybody, it won't be quite so.
Should we maybe put out, like, a-
Well, why don't we just do a do-it-all? I'm just going to do a do-it-all, hold on. Call it a day.
It's going to take forever, if we do this.
Yes, do a doodle poll for the last three weeks of June.
Perfect, okay.
The last, how many weeks of June?
I mean, the first three weeks. I'm sorry.
The first three weeks, yeah.
You know, from, like, until school gets out.
Okay, we'll do that. Look for, look in your emails tonight or tomorrow morning for a doodle.
Would he be willing to do two separate tours if we can't come to consensus?
I'm sure, but let's do a doodle.
Or, or I can ask Bobby for a special tour.
Because we do have our school committee meeting on the 9th.
Yeah, what about right before that?
We could do it on the 9th.
June?
Yeah. 5:00 to 6:30?
That's good.
Okay, what now?
5 o'clock, June 9th.
5:00 PM, June 9th.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Fabulous.
Great. Perfect. And the email Bobby room.
Probably won't be able to make it.
He asked for a couple of days. We're giving up on it.
Nope, we are actually, we, we're done after the previous meeting.
What time?
5:00?
Yes, the Tuesday is our last SEAC.
And please let Bobby know that that took a lot of deliberation, so I hope he's-
I'll provide him a link to the tape.
Can we have White Hart Kitchen here for us to eat? I'm going to have to bring my kids.
Okay, good. Moving right along. Legislative update.
Nothing to report. There's still, the House and the Senate budgets are still being contested.
Okay. Green Team.
Uh, we haven't met.
Good. Operations Subcommittee. SEAL. Okay. Collaborative.
Okay, the Lower Pine River Valley Educational Collaborative has a new executive director. His name is Mr. Churchill. And he was offered an interim contract pending his attainment of superintendency licensure. But we have a director in place.
Middle School Working Group. Policy Sub.
We met today. We are still talking about some added district fees. We are still tweaking our food service policy. We haven't made no changes to our acceptable use policy as of yet. And we have a new policy that we were talking about for background checks.
Perfect. Can't wait to see all this stuff come up. All right, and anything else on the, the other reports list? Okay. And finally, before we move on to the approval of warrants and minutes, I've just got one piece of business. As you know, Marie Angelides and I, Tom Marie, Paul Fisterzak and Stephen Crane, meet occasionally to kind of, you know, figure out, you know, some of the larger overarching, you know, issues impacting our town. And one of the things that Marie and I have been, you know, interested in for some time has been figuring out the best way to leverage the collective, you know, the collective number of buildings between our jurisdictions and the collective interests in utility costs. And we want to bring before our individual boards the idea of proposing a joint energy committee. And the committee would essentially, you know, go out and, very similar to what Mark, some of the work Mark Gold did in the past, figure out the best way to leverage those, you know, leverage our collective purchasing power to come up with a number of solutions, including the procurement of solar arrays for five of the six public schools and available town buildings, for the landfill and for other available areas in the community, as well as lining up, which we've talked about on an administrative level, and I think Finance Sub has talked about a little bit, lining up the days of procurement for, for natural gas and electricity. Right now, we're not aligned on that, which would mean that either the schools or the town had to go on the spot market until our, until both contracts are up. And then we would negotiate together. Obviously, a lot of that gets done through the collaborative, but ideally, it would be better if we could all be on the same timeline, since we are all purchasing the same stuff. And so that's, so basically, what I'm asking tonight is if the committee will indulge that, in which case, I will write a letter to the Select Board informing them of our support or lack of support for this initiative, and then see where it goes from there. Knowing them, they may not be too supportive of that, so. But I think that, you know, now that we are designated a Green Community, now that we, you know, do have this interest in, you know, saving money on utilities for our, both of, I mean, realistically, both school and general government, this is a really great first step, especially the solar aspect of it. And especially when communities like Ludlow have their own solar plants and greenfield, and, you know, the number just keeps growing. We shouldn't be left out of that.
I agree.
I agree, I'd like to be on that committee.
Perfect, me too. I have three soon, okay, three, okay, all right, so.
The question I have about that is, okay, we put solar collectors on school building and municipal building roofs, are we also going to look at independent solar arrays, you know, whether they're just placed in fields? If so, then you're up against playing fields for student activities versus, you know, I mean, we could cover every square piece of.
We could.
Land that's available with solar arrays.
We need twenty acres of the water tower.
Twenty acres of water tower?
Water tower?
Just kidding, sorry.
That's a good use, uh, no, John, you're right, and I, I mean, obviously.
Well, and also, if I could, I think you understand this, there's all kinds of options out there on installing them, leasing versus buying, and then sometimes the people who put them, install them, want the money that's created to go to them.
Right.
So, I mean, we need to look at just what we're going to get out of this.
Yeah.
Not to mention the fact that, I think we'll have a dispute with the town versus the schools over who gets the electricity.
Right.
If it's on our buildings, it's our electricity, I can just see that happening.
Well, I think that's, that's the value of having a joint committee on that, is at least trying to parse out those issues before they blow up and fling the community. You know, obviously, I think anything that, any, I mean, anything being used as a playing field right now is probably off limits, but we do have the landfill that has been capped and, you know, and can be graded, that Mark did do the due diligence on, it wasn't feasible at the time. But maybe in the context of a larger procurement, it could be more feasible. You know, obviously, and I also know that the town is interested in using some of the green community's money to purchase the streetlights, which would be a huge savings in the budget.
Because we lease those right now.
Because we lease them right now.
I thought that was a done deal.
I don't know, I haven't heard anything about it. So I think that there's a lot of stuff out there that, you know, we can, we can do together, and I think it is another kind of good step towards working together a little bit. Lord knows, we could use more of that.
We can try.
We can try. Yes, all right, so with your consensus, I suppose, I'll, I'll drop the letter to Marie and we'll get this thing going. Perfect, and Kim?
Really fast, in the, I, I was actually approached a couple months ago by Marie Angelides and Stephen Crane about a walking school bus, and I know I had talked about it last fall, and so I've met with Marie again, and we've met with Mass Safe Roots for School, and we're going to try and pilot a program in the fall at Blueberry, if we can get some volunteers, so if there's anybody in the Blueberry family that is watching, please email me if you're interested. I went to the PTO meeting last week and asked them for volunteers as well, but we were trying to pilot a walking school bus program, see how we can do. And just want to make people aware that that's going on.
Perfect.
Great.
And just one other thing, Bobby did respond already, and he said he will make himself available for.
Dated May sixteenth, twenty fourteen, in the amount of three hundred eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. Motion carries.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number twenty-two oh-one of the school lunch FY fourteen fund dated May sixteen, twenty fourteen, in the amount of eighty thousand seven hundred forty dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Is that it for warrants?
Yes, sir.
Great. Moving right along to the approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes from April fifteenth.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April fifteen, twenty fourteen, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any corrections or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. And the motion, all those opposed, all those abstaining, all right, so, motion carries, six zero one. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes from April twenty-eighth.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion or corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. All those opposed, all those abstaining, okay, and the motion carries, six zero one. Finally, we have a motion on the executive session minutes, and I would just ask that those are approved.
I move that the school committee approve the executive session minutes of the April twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, any corrections? Any further discussion on the executive session minutes? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor. The motion carries, seven oh. That is all the business that we have today, we will be back on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, at seven o'clock, we will have the superintendent's evaluation that night, providing she's here.
Executive session.
And we do have an executive session planned, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of strategy, as it relates to litigation, not to reconvene into open session.
Second.
A motion and a second, this motion requires a roll call, vote all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, thanks so much, have a great night.